Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. Will the Clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Six Members present.
Thank you, Clerk. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, everyone. Our next order of business is Proclamations. We have one from Councilman Lavelle. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning. Ms. Nelson, and any guests would please come forward. As she comes forward, and before reading the proclamation, I will simply say, Ms. Nelson is the type of individual that this city needs. She's a grad-- from the Hill District, graduate-- come on the way. Graduate of Shinley High School, actually the last graduating class from Shinley High School. Went away to college, earned two different degrees, but has come back to do phenomenal work in the city. And so, we're really pleased to thank her for all her work and welcome her here today. Whereas, Ms. Nandie Nelson, a licensed clinical social worker and board-certified behavioral analyst, is a Hill District native, graduate of Shinley High School as part of the first class to receive the Pittsburgh Promise, and founder and clinical director of Social Behavior Learning Solutions. Whereas, Ms. Nelson is a member of the Association of Behavioral Analysis International and the Association of Professional Behavior Analysis. She has a Bachelor of Science in Human Development and Family Studies and a minor in Psychology from the Pennsylvania State University, as well as a Master's Degree in Social Work from the University of Michigan. Whereas, a thoughtful trailblazer, empathetic entrepreneur, and strong advocate for individuals and families affected by autism and other intellectual disabilities, Ms. Nelson is on a mission to create awareness around autism and help parents and practitioners overcome any barriers they may face. Whereas, Ms. Nelson developed an interest in exploring incarceration and its impact on parent-child relationships, where it led to a discovered interest and passion in pursuing a career, working with and helping children with autism and other developmental issues. Whereas, using her expertise to empower and educate others around the world, Ms. Nelson serves as an adjunct professor, regularly presents at conferences and events on a range of autism and behavior management-related topics, and provides professional dissemination of applied behavioral analysis. Whereas, Ms. Nelson is active in her community, partnering with organizations geared toward serving adolescents, those affected by homelessness, and those in special needs community. Whereas, she is also an author, having written a children's book, Jake's Adventures: A Trip to Summer Camp, which teaches young children about acceptance and understanding of their peers with autism spectrum disorder. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare February 4th, 2020, to be Nandie Nelson Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Proclamation approved. Congratulations.
Good morning, distinguished guests. This is an extremely special moment for me, and I am honored to stand before you today. First, I would like to say thank you to Councilman Lavelle, my parents, Lynn and Daryl Nelson, my family and friends, and last but not least, God. I am honored to receive this proclamation for Nandie Nelson Day. As a Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania Hill District native, I am deeply honored to be recognized for the tireless work that I have done to promote autism awareness and acceptance, both in the United States and globally. My passion to serve individuals in need has led me to create Social Behavior Learning Solutions, a therapy practice that provides support for children, families, and organizations. I have also written a children's book titled Jake's Adventure: A Trip to Summer Camp, which addresses friendship, bullying, and special needs, and brings awareness to individuals with autism spectrum disorder. The work that I do with individuals on the autism spectrum makes me appreciate the little things in life so much more. Things such as responding to a social greeting, self-regulation in a noisy environment, eating with a fork, and knowing how to navigate social situations. Seeing my clients make small gains fuels my desire to continue being an advocate and trailblazer for individuals with autism and their families. Thank you again, Councilman, for making February 4th, 2020, Nandie Nelson Day. I am humbled and truly grateful for your recognition of my achievements, and sincerely thank you for increasing public awareness for autism. Thank you.
Now, we have two proclamations to be read into the record, one for Councilman O'Connor for Cribs for Kids, and one for Councilman Lavelle. Do we have his? Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle also presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare February 4th to be Mrs. Anna Turner Murchison Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilman O'Connor presents, now be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Thursday, March 12th, 2020, to be the Women of Achievement Awards Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve?
To move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Proclamation to approve. The next order of business is public comment. Anyone wishing to comment before City Council has three minutes to speak. Please give your name and neighborhood for the record. The green light will indicate the start of three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute to summarize. When the red light comes on, your time is up. Will the first speaker please come to the podium? First speaker, please. Good morning.
Morning. My name is Zach Lewis. I live in Mount Washington. Dear members of the City and County Council, I come before you today with a completely shattered heart and with a broken faith in our justice systems due to the negligence and extreme lack of due diligence on behalf of our agencies and their workers involved in the protection of our children. I would like to bring to your attention the brazen tyranny that is being committed by our government institutions and their employees who proclaim to keep our children safe, which is undoubtedly strictly denying them of their constitutional right of liberty and causing them to persevere through heinous atrocities. Through research, I have come to uncover that these men and women who make up the workforce of these agencies are protected by certain immunities, so that they cannot be charged with crimes that any other person would face if they were to do the same. These immunities are allowing these employees to desecrate families by knowingly falsifying court documents and submitting erroneous letters, reports to our judges who rely upon their information to ensure the safety and well-being of our children, and most importantly, are directly causing countless children to continue fall through the cracks. It is at this moment that I am begging and pleading with you all to do something about this and make the necessary changes to ensure that our children of the City and County are being properly protected. These workers should be held accountable for their actions just as anybody else would, if not more so, due to the sheer fact that these innocent children, their parents, and their families, who are trying to do their best to keep them safe, are depending and relying upon their due diligence to report true and correct information to our legal systems. If we do not implement the proper changes, our innocents will be forced to continue to endure through these unspeakable oppressions that they are wrongly faced with. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Good morning. Dr. Ronald Miller, South Side and the West End, American Psychological Association, American Physical Society, GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. I'm the Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2020. We're using a fusion of the best information and intelligence from 21 primary disciplines with which I am connected to solve our social problems. But this last week, or this week into this week, the Democratic Party in Iowa gave us the best information or intelligence, or BS. Trump's State of the Union, BII, or BS. The trial in the U.S. Senate, the best information intelligence, no, it's BS. But some non-BS information is that Wuhan, China, is a Pittsburgh sister or brother city. And what I wonder is, is Council and/or the Office of Mayor doing anything to help Wuhan in this crisis with the coronavirus? I think we should. Sheldon Jackson Lee, Director of Do the Right Thing, is the only black one of 100 American Film Institute Greatest U.S. Film Directors, at 96, zero females. How is the AFI list not racist? No Gordon Parks, no Bill Gunn, not sexist, no Idalupina, or Kimberly Pierce. Concerns of Council are racism and sexism, and I'm going to use DP as an abbreviation for the Democratic Party in my comments. Racism. Since 1870, post the amendments 13 to 15 of the U.S. Constitution, Pittsburgh has had no black African-American mayor, and no DP endorsement. Pittsburgh zero. Richmond, Virginia, which is the state capital of Virginia, but also formerly the capital of the Confederacy, has presently a black African-American male mayor, LeVar Stoney. Richmond one, Pittsburgh zero. There is a high correlation, in my view, between the, again, my view, castration of the black African-American Pittsburgh political sector and control of Pittsburgh City Government by the Democratic Party. I don't see this as progressive. I see it as retrogressive sexism. Since 1920, post USC Amendment 19, Pittsburgh has had no female mayor and no DP endorsement. Pittsburgh zero. Boise, Idaho, the state capital of Idaho, has a white European-American female mayor, Lauren McLean, and is married to Julie Nemeth. Boise one, Pittsburgh zero. Again, a high correlation between the condescension to the female political sector here and control by the government via the Democratic Party. Doing the right thing doesn't seem to be a pattern.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Next speaker, please. Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne Brown. I live in the Hill District. I'm listening on the news when they're talking about the trial for those men that killed the five people. Now, when you had, when the five Jews were killed outside the door, you had their names. But when we came to the black people that got killed, you had Wendy Bell on TV talking about the mamas, daddies, mama babies and stuff. Now, the reason why I'm bringing that up is that when those black people got killed, I was listening on the radio, KDKA Crow was on. Somebody called in and said, "Those five black people killed, where is Al Sharpton?" And said some other derogatory thing. Well, what I wanted you to know, and what I told him, that moving forward, we need to take a stand. We are not going to stand for this. This is April the 8th, 2017. The city paper, the Wilkinsburg Rose Bryce, people are calling who have information. Why aren't you returning the people's calls? And then, anonymous Mr. Crow, he had, in fact, there was a man that had given a detective a card, and he was saying, he called the detective. The detective didn't call back. Now, here is one of the policemen sitting there, and I believe Doyle was in here. This is in Wilkinsburg. When those five people got killed, yous didn't care. The same way I look at Mr. Burgess. When I asked you to write a letter to the Justice Department about my son, what you did in turn was, you wrote a bill. You wrote a bill for the hire the Wilkinsburg killers, because they let a woman die and my son. But you wanted to hire him because the garbage men did a good job. Come on, Mr. Burgess. You're supposed to represent us all. And my son, being a black man, seemed like you would have even questioned it, but you said, "Because the garbage men in Wilkinsburg did such a good job, you're going to hire the police." Another thing I want you to understand is this. When I saw what they're doing with Bush, it made me remember. When you hear something, you forget it. You see it, you can remember. And Ricky, Ricky was a Vietnam vet. When he came back, he used to say, "The United Snakes of America." And I believe in that meeting, in that whatever, can't even have a trial because Bush says, I mean, Trump says so. You know what? That was an open ear. All them snakes in there. Snakes. And just because you keep saying something over and over don't make it the truth. Facts is what we need. And I have the facts, that you don't care about black people.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Have a good day. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, move on to the next order of business, the presentation of papers. Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation. Good morning, Councilman Burgess.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 86, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation and the Director of the Department of Public Safety and of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with individual amounts of $10,000 or less with performers, instructors, artists, referees, and persons with specialized skills in connection with the department's recreational and instructional programs and special event services. Bill Number 87, Resolution Providing for an Agreement and/or Lease Agreement for the Use of Certain Property for Senior Facilities for the Provision of Center Services to Seniors in an Amount Not to Exceed $87,010, chargeable to and payable from the Seniors Community Program Trust Fund in the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am clerk. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Madam President.
Good morning, Councilman. Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 88, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 816 by Increasing the Federal Funding Allocation for Bike Infrastructure by $73,886.40. Bill Number 89, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 386, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement with the City and Passcheck plus MTR by increasing the total allocation to $400,000. Bill Number 90, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 591, which provide for an agreement with the Bike Infrastructure Program and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $836,632, to account for both previous work completed on bike infrastructure projects utilizing Resolution 591, and to account for the new total bid amount for the Gap to the Point project, but not to exceed $955,155.96.
Councilman, there's a, you have a waiver, Rule 8 for Bill 90? Do you want to--
That's right, Madam President.
Do I make that? Okay. Do we have a second? Thank you. I want to make sure you're okay with it. Do we have a second?
To a motion?
All in favor?
Motion to waive Rule 8.
Any discussion? Do we have a discussion on this?
Second, no discussions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It'll be on tomorrow's agenda. Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. Councilman Kraus for Councilwoman Gross.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Public Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 91, In Ordnance Providing for Funding for the City of Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund through a 0.50 mil increase to the property tax rate by adding Section 26304, City of Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund Levy at Title II, Fiscal Article IX, Property Taxes, Chapter 263, Real Property Tax and Exemption.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Lavelle. Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Mr. President?
Thank you, Council.
Not a president.
Mr. Man, it might be the mustache gets you confused. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I, two appointments, one for PWSA is Councilwoman Strasburger, and for Pittsburgh Parking Authority, Councilwoman Wilson.
Council President Smith presents Bill Number 92, Resolution Appointing Erica Strasburger as a Member of the Board of Directors of the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for a Term to Expire, March 31st, 2022. Bill Number 93, Resolution Appointing Bobby Wilson to Serve as a Member of the Pittsburgh Parking Authority for a Term to Expire, April 30th, 2022.
Thank you. I don't know what the will of--
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. And what's, these are council members, usually we don't interview for council members. Okay. And so, that's, can we have a, we have a voice vote? A second? Do we have a second?
We need a second.
Second.
Okay. Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any extensions? And I just want to say, I want to thank, I'm just briefly going to mention this. Councilwoman Gross, who served on the PWSA board for a very long time, did a really great job in making sure she worked with us on those concerns. But I think that, to me, there is no better scenario than to have Councilwoman Strasburger and Councilwoman Gross together on any board, or even working separately and independently, and making sure that the public's dollars or, and the public's interest is really looked after. And I just want to thank you for your willingness to serve, and Councilwoman Gross for her previous service. And now, we have two communications, the acting pay request and fiscal audit. She's quick.
Council President also presents Bill Number 94, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approval on Behalf of the Department of City Planning for Lisa Ray, Per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June of 2018. Bill Number 95, Communication from Michael Lamb, City Controller, Submitting a Fiscal Audit of the City of Pittsburgh's Department of Parks and Recreation, Pittsburgh's Sports Official Park Empress Fund, 2019 City Sports Baseball Leagues, dated December 30th, 2019.
Thank you. And can we have a motion to read, receive, and file?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Moves forward. Next order of business, Committee for Final Action. Councilman Lavelle, the Chair of Finance and Law. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 80, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for January 29th, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 49, Resolution Providing for an Agreement for Payment of the City's Share of the 2020 Operating Expenses to the Allegheny County Central Tax Collection District for Tax Collection, Cost Not to Exceed $8,930.81.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing no discussion, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the Clerk please take, call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
The bills, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Councilman O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 81, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for January 29th, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 50, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 849, which authorized the mayor and director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city into an amended professional services agreement with Endtime Solution, Inc., for EMS and police scheduling and timekeeping services. Resolution Number 849 of 2019 has been amended in order to correct JDE job numbers. Bill Number 51, Resolution Amending Resolution 50 of 2018, which authorized the mayor and director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement with Cover Your Assets LLC by extending the term of the agreement in order for the pending RFP process to be completed. Bill Number 52, Resolution Authorizing the Citizen Police Review Board to enter into an agreement with Attorney William F. Ward of Rothman Gordon, PC, for professional services to assist in the legal representation of the Citizen Police Review Board for a period of three years. Said agreement shall not exceed $45,000 per year for 2020, 21, and 22, subject to the annual allocation by the City Council.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bills, or is there any discussion on the bills? Well, this is good. Seeing no further discussion, we will, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
The bills, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 82, Report of the Committee on Public Works for January 29th, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 7, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Duquesne Light Company to provide a permanent construction easement for the improvement of the Razzie Power Substation in the central Oakland neighborhood, and to a license to maintain a swath of land at the base of the hill to improve long-term storm water control of the city's property, which also affects the substation. Bill Number 42, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Allegheny Crane Rental in the Amount of $88,150 for Emergency Work at Penn Avenue and 10th Street. Bill Number 43, Resolution Granting unto AT&amp;T their successors and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain a use of their own cost and expense, six antennas, to the facade of the building at 240 Fourth Avenue in the 1st Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 45, Resolution Granting unto the University of Pittsburgh, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain a use of their own cost and expense, a storm-water runoff mitigation rain garden at 3550 Terrence Street, 4th Ward, 8th Council District. Bill Number 46, Resolution Granting unto Carnegie Mellon University, CDFD, their successors and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain a use of their own cost and expense, a retaining wall along Fillmore Street and Forbes Avenue, and a tree pit at 4665 Forbes Avenue in the 4th Ward, 8th Council District.
Thank you, ma'am clerk. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam clerk, just briefly, or, Madam President, just briefly. Bill 7, that references the Razzie Power Substation in central Oakland, just want to reiterate my comments of last week, in that there's still a lot to be done there. We're keeping an eye on it. We're holding community meetings, making sure residents are engaged. There's a lot going on. There's a lot of moving parts, but this is a small piece of bringing it together. So, I am supportive, but there's still a lot of work left to do.
Thank you, Councilman. I want to thank you for your work in Oakland. As everyone knows, my family's from that area, and it's always someplace that's still near and dear to my heart. But I know you do a great job in representing the people.
There's no place like Oakland. There just isn't. Yes.
I think we have great representation on there.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, you have heard the reading. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, the bills are ready for final action. Those in favor vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed vote nay.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
The bills having received the legally required numbers of votes are finally passed. Thank you, ma'am clerk, for reading that. Do we have you next?
I'm just a little caffeinated this morning. Yeah, at least I have me next. Can you move resources?
Yes, we do. Councilman Kraus, Committee on Human Resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Madam President, before the bill, can we limit Councilman Kraus's coffee intake?
Motion approved.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill number 83, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for January 29th, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 48, Resolution Amending Resolution 151, which authorized the city to enter into a professional services agreement with consultants and/or service providers for professional services in connection with civil service and MPEO ETC required assessment and evaluation of public safety candidates by increasing the total, not to exceed, amount of $160,000 to cover services in 2020.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing no discussion? Bills are ready now for final action. All in favor? The passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required numbers of vote are finally passed. Now we'll move on to the Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number 84, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for January 29th, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 40, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 797, adopting and approving the 2018 Capitol Budget, the 2018 CDBG Program, and the 2018 through 2023 Capitol Improvement Program by making an amendment and name change to city council line items and authorizing a subsequent agreement for operation, administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city. Bill number 41, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863, by amending various city council CDBG unspecified local option line items and authorizing a subsequent agreement for operation, administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents. Bill number 53, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with agencies to provide rapid rehousing activities, including rental assistance and housing relocation and stabilization services as associated with emergency solutions grant funds at a cost not to exceed $240,625.
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing no discussion, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Now we'll move on to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Councilwoman Kraus for Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number 85, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for January 29th, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 47, Resolution Authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city to enter into a corporation and license agreement with the URA to authorize the inclusion of designated city properties in the land care program and to further authorize reimbursement payments for the services of the URA and its contractors.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing no discussion? The bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And now we'll move on to motions and resolutions, and I have a small game of chance for Westwood Oakwood Athletic Association.
Mrs. Kelsmith presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby recognizes Westwood Oakland, Westwood Oakwood Athletic Association to be a civic and/or service organization within the context of the Pennsylvania Small Games of Chance Act as amended.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
To a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? It's approved. Thank you. Resolution's approved. Thank you. Now we have meeting announcements. A briefing is scheduled this afternoon with sessions beginning at 1:30 and 2:30 in the large conference room relative to upcoming bond legislation. Is there any discussion for members? Wow, you guys are good today. Thanks. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes and to adjourn the meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. I think I missed a step there, but it's adjourned.